Blake, is it possible to put up a picture of the American flag?
Um.
And the PowerPoint for Sean?
I've been prepared.
Well, I thought that you weren't like in the library or in the. My.
Zoom is connected.
So we're good to go.
To share the presentation yet, but we're going to start the meeting.
Yes, yeah, yes. I don't know if that's a portable thing or not. All right. So everybody in Zoom land, we have a motion by Elise, second by Jason. Was there any discussion? Hearing that, all in favor?
Hi.
Please stand and say please believe this with me. He's a star.
United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia stands the nation. Justice.
Okay, so for this. This meeting discussion items A, the public records request and procedures. Yeah, so this is just a preliminary review of the public records request policy resolution that will be on the next board meeting agenda. So if everybody's okay with with the policy and the resolution, we can put it on the agenda for the next board meeting. Part of the discussion was around if we wanted to hire a records clerk or records request officer beyond myself or have it listed as somebody else. But for the time being, I think the decision or the consensus was to just name me and then if we make that decision after, we can always change it. So that's the first first discussion item. If everybody's fine with that, and then of course, putting it on Wednesday nights agenda.
Yeah, I would agree with everything that was said there. Anybody else have any input?
I agree with that. I'm I'm not wholly in favor of hiring at all times public records. Part because that's money we can use on kids. It seemed to be distributing what they need to do down there to get it done. You realize Matt can, you know, have other people actually do the work. But we do need some remaining this person.
I think down the road, if we hire someone, if someone else is trained to do it, it's just passing the resolution. It's simple. I think Sean Mumford directed this for the district attorney. I have a high level of trust in Sean. The only paragraph I would like to see taken out is on page four. And it says, it reads first four paragraph, if the district does not respond, then in writing, then five business days of receipt of the request for the disclosure of the requesters to contact the public records officer to determine the reason for the third day to respond. Right? That seems to read to me that we're putting the onus on the person making the requests. And that's and that's not how the law reads.
It's five days and we have to explain why.
You could even say.
Give them a time frame and or explain why.
Yeah.
So they have to have a receipt of contact.
Then five days.
If that's what the law reads, that's.
Okay. Okay.
Nothing else you notice? I didn't catch that all, so.
I have it all.
The the other thing we talked about was kind of blending a position with somebody who's a kind of public information officer, somebody who has the capabilities to do like YouTube videos in some district communication, and then also filling in part of that with records, this records position. So the potential of in many of our, I think at the district office level, we have many people that wear different hats. And so maybe in the future, tailoring a position around the needs in the district or looking at that.
I would get for that discussion later, but not with finances right now.
I do have one quick clarification question. In the policy paragraph C, maintenance of indexes. So I guess procedurally, can you, when you do a public records request, does that come, do you do that at the district office? Or do you do it in individual schools?
No, it they can request it at individual schools. Usually it's handled. We've had that discussion. Yeah. And so over the past year, all of our administrators have been through public records training. And so it's it's not something that they cover and say like principal school. But it's good. It's good for them to know. And so the the kind of directive is that they forward that on so the district can respond on their building's behalf. Now, one of the stories I tell is that before before I applied about the job here, I had asked for certain records from people in the district. And never got, never got a hold of them. So making sure that that that's connected between building and district. But yeah, usually we deal with it at district level. Instead of dealing with it at the public level, unless the principal has the record, they can just hand over. But even even so, they're supposed to let us know so we can keep note of it.
So I I get maybe this is a confusion for me. It's because of a large volume of public records is continuously generated and filed by various offices throughout the district that we will not have a single index of these records. Anyway, do I read that right?
Yeah, so we we yeah, track them, track them at the district level. Julie Hyatt used to do that for us. And so, but like I said, sometimes you get parents coming in and saying, can I get that record at, you know, at K R V? And so they're supposed to let us know ideally, but sometimes there's loose connections.
So is this paragraph not even needed? I mean, I guess I'm just trying to understand why it's in there. If if all the records come from the district office or majority of come from the district office, we would have record of that. At the district office.
I just, I'm just wondering, like, the crap that comes in and says, hey, can I get a copy of your discipline handbook, you know, or something that the principal has sent it over? I mean, I don't, people come in and ask buildings for things. Is that what it's trying to cover? I don't know.
So is, here's my question on the policy. So if someone makes a record request to Heights, that goes to the district office first to be answered. Heights does not answer.
If it's a formal one.
Right. So this policy is about, in my mind, you're discussing formal record requests.
In fact, doesn't the individual schools just automatically direct them to the district office and not even take them?
Yeah, they send them on to us. They're, yeah, they're informal.
No, I don't mean the the actual request for such and such. They just say, Mr. Smith, drive on over to the district office and hand that to. Yeah, they literally don't take it at the building level, correct?
Oh, I don't, I don't know. I have to.
It was given to him and taken.
Yeah.
Not my issue.
Well, I'm not gonna say it like that, but I mean, I'm thinking that should be almost like a
procedural.
Procedural in the district. It automatically goes to this office if you want a formal records request. Does that sound out right?
No, I think that makes sense because what if it gets left on someone's desk and on the sixth day, it's still on their desk. That's a problem.
You know, did my Michael Denny get something and goes home and falls down the stairs, breaks his ankle and doesn't, you know, spaces it. And I mean, that's an expensive ankle. So I think that should actually be written into then in the the building level, it has to go through the district office for any formal record request.
Yeah, I I don't know.
Does it seem that almost all the records should.
I don't understand. No.
So getting back to my question, do we need this paragraph? That's what I I mean, is it, I mean, probably this may be petty, but if we don't need it, should we just take it out? Because all the records should be done and filed at the district office if that's.
Yeah, I can ask Sean Mumford about it and see if we really need it. I don't think, I don't think that the law do distinguishes between formal and informal requests. So, yeah, so whether it's verbal, the parent saying, I want that record, or whether it's via email, or even if somebody called and left it on a voicemail and said, I want these records. It is right.
I know we've had people in my work that said, hey, I want information on such and such, and we'll call the office and they say the same thing here, but you need to drive, send it, fill out paperwork, hand it in, and then give you whatever you need. I like that.
I think that makes sense.
So yeah, it makes the most sense that everything goes through one one office, one secretary, one something, but not just. And if it's informal, it's informal. It's relevant. Other than that, I think I'm good. Anything you notice, Jimmy?
Well, that's the only thing I was saying down the road.
Yeah.
If we're not getting it hard, he's more than capable of covering it for us. All right.
Yeah, y'all, I'll circle back around with Sean and get some clarification on that for for Jason, and then it'll be on the next board. Board agenda, board packet.
All right, next thing, special items is levy resource allocation.
Yeah, so this is a huge discussion. We, of course, we've heard the concerns about the lack of transparency. And we've really tried to define that over over the past while within, you know, Craig, Deanna and I. But as we defined it, of course, I've talked to the board about kind of a two-pronged approach that we have, we have to think in both if we have the money and don't have the money. And so this discussion is about if we don't have the money, what types of cuts could potentially be in our future and what types of programs. So Craig has has done a tremendous amount of work on this, Deanna, as well. And there's been a lot of discussion. Is this being a study session? The plan is to bring this back to the board again. After we have, you know, some of your questions and present it to the board. And if you want us to make a recommendation, we can, or if the board wants to kind of sort through that, what it looks like in order to make these cuts, we can, we can do that as well. So Craig.
Yeah, I'm sure.
You're up first.
So I I do have a comment, and this is on the very conservative lawyer side of this. It gives me pause that we're in a school building, this board work session talking about the levy, and another very specific roles with the P D C compliance could be going forward, just get a letter from bond council that says this is okay. It's okay that you have to scrap and discuss it and it just to cover any liability issues. I think
Yeah.
that would be very important.
Yeah, we can definitely get that from the bond, the bond council. What we're talking about is is a budgetary, you know, basically budgetary constraints and numbers. And so based upon last year's budget, and then, of course, with forecasting, not getting into the zone of trying to persuade somebody about how to vote, but as a as a board member in being responsible for budget, really being trying to provide clarity around that decision-making process for everyone.
And I understand that position. I think just the bone suspended situation to take it.
Yep, yeah. Yeah, we can.
Are you guys wanting to wait on this discussion until we have that?
I just wanted to say that to cover liability.
Okay.
Well, this will be informational.
Or is everybody comfortable talking about it tonight? Or do you want me to queue on the table this for the meeting?
I love to everybody.
Yeah, I'm perfectly fine with information. I think as long as we put it out there that we're gonna make sure we have a table.
Yeah.
Sean, go ahead. So this is the, there's a survey that the district put out. We had, I think, in the end, 509 respondents. The first question was just about what best describes you. The majority of people that submitted surveys were parents, parent or guardians, grandparents. We do have a lot of grandparents in the that are raising children in our community. And then, of course, you can see the next group of district employees, and then there are some other folks that chose some other categories. Go ahead. So the first question was, what are what are people's top priorities for the use of levy funds? And by far, the the highest priority was student learning and staffing. And then second, in second to that came health support, which probably in our times right now is pretty pertinent. And then you can see the other four areas are kind of almost in a dead tie. Instructional support, security, athletics activities, and maintenance and operations. And then the other they had the opportunity to give a response, starting on question three. And if I if I'm going in a question, just stop. So there were over 100 comments on question three. I think there were 131 to be exact. And so what I did is I attempted to collate them into to count them as based on what they said, because they're all over the board. So I did my best to to collate them. I want to say, and I have a comment on the last slide for question five, there were people that said address bullying on question three, but then there are people that said it on question five. And then there are people that said art music on question three, but then other people said it on question five. So what I did was, if it if it was said on on question, on slide three, and they still said it, or I'm sorry, question three, and they still said it on question five, I just put those together. I didn't listen twice. And so they're in order. Some people might put one comment, some people put, you know, 10 things in one comment. So I tried to quantify all those. The biggies, you can see, I did any, I put anything up here that was five or more comments, bullying, mental health, academic support for students, eliminating consultants, security and security measures, art keeping, having art and music courses, smaller class sizes. This one was kind of a conglomerate, smaller class sizes, hire more staff, after-school programs and activities, curriculum, increasing discipline, support for special education students, support for bilingual students, and then really curriculum to improve facilities, improve maintenance of facilities, and then more instructional coaches or instructional coaching in the in the buildings. There were some other comments, but most, you know, I have a very long list. I think by print, the whole thing, it's 500 pages with each of the individual responses. The greatest areas of concern, the biggest one in this, well, you'll see it on the next slide, was transparency and how funding is used. People don't know or understand where the money is going. District and board communication was a big response as well. You can see well over half, over half the people responded in transparency and almost half in our communication. And then, of course, you can see the mountain cost of programs is, you know, kind of comes in third. And, you know, there were people that are still unhappy with the mask mandate. I actually planned on taking that question out and ended up stating in. And then there were people that didn't have any concerns. That's the round. And question five was kind of the other catch-all, add irrelevant information. So these are topics that showed up in the last question that maybe, you know, the communication, I might have put communication up there twice, but the taxes were too high was one that we heard. And the the biggest one of all, 25 people said, I don't know how you use either money. Okay, so I put a little note there that three and five is kind of a combination because some of the same comments were in both. Any questions about the survey? It was, it, you know, I don't think there's any surprises, but I think it was good to help us see what, you know, what some of the issues were and things that our people are very focused on.
And we had, how many people responded?
I think 509.
How many surveys went out?
Well, it went out electronically, so all to every parent, everybody, all the parents was out on social media, you know, so, you know, just for parents, it's thousands.
Okay, all right. The, we've seen this slide before, and this is how, so for 2122, our budget is this 3.4 million in levy resources. And that's just the property tax from the patrons, not anything to do with state match. So that's just what's been budgeted for the 2122 school year. Hopefully, I haven't seen the next slide. I helped Deanna and I prepare the next slide, but it's going to give you more details. So I don't know.
T S L doesn't function.
Right, if you can.
Doesn't tell you a lot.
Yeah, so what I've done is broke, breaking, broken down the the various categories that comprise the 3.4 million. Now, there's some of these categories, though, that, like, for example, you know, security, that that stands by itself, substitutes, you know, stands by itself. But when there's, can we combine some of the activities on the graph? That's why, that's what I've broken down. So I know, Mr. Rayner, you've asked for athletic coaches by sport.
Yes, but also just the overall cost.
Right, but.
Not just coaches, but to actually play.
I understand. Just trust me. To set at the bottom, I just want to start at the top.
Perfect.
So you can see the, on the left-hand side, well, maybe I just, that's for the right-hand side first. Maintenance and grounds is a number and then custodial. And maybe I should just talk maybe at the outset, 30 seconds of how school districts are funded. Maybe that would be helpful to people. We have enrollment that we project, I project. And this is, we're talking basic education now. We're not talking any of the other curricular grants, grants, you know, special ed, food service, transportation. We're talking just basic education. And so we have enrollment, and then that generates a certain number of the state causing us staffing units, or it's FTEs, full-time equivalent, based on that enrollment. It generates, you know, X number of teachers. It generates X number of counselors. And and so again, the state has these formulas, again, based on our enrollment. And then let's say that, you know, they generate 100 teachers. The state also gives us an allocation for what one teacher costs. Not one teacher costs, what the state has given us for one teacher. And then they also have formulas for administrators, for principals, with an allocation of principals. And then they also, the last allocation is for classified staff, which are the non, you know, non-teachers. You know, paraprofessionals, secretaries, the non-certificated staff. And then the state also gives us some insurance and other benefit, you know, retirement, you know, social security. The state also, of course, gives us some money for their employee benefits. And then the last piece that the state really funds in the, in the apportionment document is non-employee related costs, you know, supplies, travel, registrations, those kind of things, contract services. So those three items are really how the state funds us based again upon our enrollment. And what you're gonna see, and I'm kind of getting ahead of myself, but you're gonna see some pretty massive numbers of what the state is not funding us. So across the school district is over excess of what the state funds us. And the levy is meant to pay for some of that. But but again, I just wanted to touch base on that. So this extracurricular, actually, I guess I'm talking about maintenance and grounds. So those are the amounts that we are over what the state is funding us. So maintenance and grounds, 178,000, custodial, 425,000. Now, even though it equates the FTEs and what that allocation is, those are important as far as conversation, but to me, the dollars are really what drives, you know, say that the state gave us, you know, 20 custodians, but yet we pay more, just for example, we pay more than what the state pays us, even though we have 20 custodians. The dollars would still be what is important, I think. Now, the FTE is also kind of a part of the conversation, but so we're 600,000 in custodial and maintenance. And I took the liberty to to round on our graph. I have that. And of course, you don't have this unless you can go back, but if you click on that, that's 604,000 is what I put on the levy resources. Utilities. That 223,000, again, the conversation is the state, you know, it's not woe is me, but the state does not fund holy education. And part of that is, there's utilities. For my budget, we're 223,000 dollars higher than what the state is allocated for utilities. Same thing for our liability insurance, so 293,000 there. Counseling, woeful, nursing, woeful. We have two nurses. And again,
Two nurses assistants.
And, yeah, and nursing assistants. And again, just just for example, since I have this here as far as how many nurses they would get paid for, and I didn't say I talked about FTEs, but I want just to let you know. We get point 566, we get half of a nurse is what the state is funding us. It's kind of crazy to me. But anyway, that's still a law right now, but they have just passed a budget to increase that. But for our purposes right now, with nurses and office assistants that work in the health room, we're 290,000 dollars over. Library, we do get paid for more librarians than we have as far as a certificated librarian. But we have some office assistants that also library assistants that help in the library. So 664,000 dollars there. So there's a lot on the graph. I get 293,000 for insurance and utilities. I got nursing, counseling, 664,000. So that's, that's what we have. Let's go back up to the athletics and extra other extracurricular. These are the sports. The middle school is the first batch there, cross-country, et cetera. So 81,000 of coaching. Of course, this includes our benefits. That by sport. Below that is going to be high school. So big-ticket item, the Mustangs, you know, brought a football, 41,000 in the coaching salaries. You can see the other ones, you know, track, volleyball. So those are the salaries and benefits for the actual coaches. And this is budget, not actual, you know, I I will give you eventually before too long an actual, so we can estimate where we're going to end up at the end of the year.
So dumb question, Greg. There's numerous girls' sports that we are over by more of a margin than equal, not equal, but the same boys' sport. Do they actually, does the state actually pay more for a boys' sport than a girls' sport?
Okay, I'm sorry to let you in. The state doesn't pay one dime for any sports. This is all 100%.
And the difference is probably just their.
The coaches might be experienced, more experienced coaches. We have. The coaches might be experienced, more experienced coaches, we have a scale. Yeah, this is a, this, this is a hundred percent on the district's tab. Thankful for the community, right, communities' dollar, yeah. So that's, that's the, then below that, Sean, we have. Postseason pay, the coaches, they go to postseason. Depending on how many, how, the number of weeks that they work. Summer coaching, there's some clinics, game management is. You know, supervisors at the games, ticket takers, those kind of things. Um, we also have many advisors, right? ASB advisors, um, clubs, all those kind of things is in that number. The. The buses and vans, that number, there's sixty-three thousand. Right now, um. If we go, they take a game, you know, do the sign, whatever. We charge athletics, two dollars per mile, that's all we charge. We don't charge the labor of the bus driver, the gas. You know, that's something we're probably gonna need to look at, we've had two dollars for a long, long time, but. Um, so that's, that's basically the, the charge. Uh, for using a bus back and forth, it's in bands. So that's, that's where athletic travel and some field trips, it's in that number. Supplies, contract services is kind of a, you know, weird. Category, I mean, but it's, it's referees, it's registrations, um. Conferences and those kind of things, if there are any. Um, AD travel and then the athletic director's salary is in there. So the grand total is eight hundred and eight thousand, five hundred and seventeen dollars. And on the, on the spreads, on the. Resources, it's eight oh nine, so I rounded, rounded up to eight oh nine.
And Craig, I think a lot of people aren't aware, at a lot of schools, uh, students pay for sports. It's out of the parents' pocket. This is absolutely amazing.
So does that help give a little more detail of? Of what's in the levy itself?
Can I get a copy of this?
Yeah, that's, that's my attempt to. Show everything that's been budgeted for. Those, those items. Now. Before you do the next slide, cause if you're gonna say, oh, like, wow, right? I'm prepping you, cause it's.
Shock factor.
Yeah, don't, so what we're gonna say is, this is the number without any. Um, of our local dollars or the state match, okay? So, just gotta prepare it. So I just wanna say, here, here's. To start off with, we're really talking about the budget for next year, right? I mean, we, we need to plan. Um, if the levy doesn't pass, we need to do a budget, if the levy does pass, we still need to do a budget. So. With this two point nine million. We still are gonna get some dollars. Next year. In the fall. Um, because our levy is a calendar year. So we are gonna get some local dollars, we're also gonna get some state match. Now, the reduction is almost three million dollars, so we're still gonna get some dollars. This year, if you see where it says twenty-one, twenty-two budget. Levy funding, so again, that's the three point four million, that's what the slide that we just talked about. And then the state. Yes, but it is, is one point seven million. And I can tell you, if you're interested, I brought that sheet with me. The, and then this, this is from OSPI's, um. Worksheet, so we would get. About one point seven million in local, so pretty much half. And then we'd get four hundred and sixty-two thousand from the state. So we, we'd get about two point two million, and right now, we're getting, you know, five point one combined, so that's the difference of the two million. Forty-two. The other thing that we wanna talk about is. Our, our budget shortfall, so that one point six million. That's, that's the budget shortfall actually for the twenty-one, twenty-two year. So that's another thing that I think we really need to talk about is that. We can't certainly keep having a budget shortfall of one point six million dollars. So. We put in, you know, if the levy fails and we wanna. Have that shortfall eliminated, we need to come up with four point six million dollars worth of reductions. So that's the starting point. Now. That next, those next four lines underneath that, which says twenty-one, twenty-two budget, the three point four, the one point seven, and. The budget shortfall, you know, is six point eight million. So we're saying that that's the money that the state. Um, is in pain. Of course, the levy, you know, is five point one million of that. So what we've done is, we've broken out, um, I've done this pretty massive spreadsheet that. That shows, here's what the state funds, here's what our, um. Um, levy funds, here's what we're short. And you'll see, go ahead, Sean, it's, it's, it's by basically like activity. You know, superintendent's salary, benefits and supplies. Again, maybe just go to the bottom, just to show real quick, the bottom. Matches, you know, the six point seven million matches the number above, so. Just to let you know, here's, here's all the numbers, so let's go back up and we can just go. I don't know if you, you can go by one by one if you want, but. Assistant superintendent, curriculum office. It's seven thousand. District office support, ninety thousand, library, thirty-eight thousand. Principals, three hundred and eighty-one thousand. Again, the state allocates us money for principals. Um, which. Doesn't pay for a principal. And we have. Get enough to pick on principals, same thing with teachers. What the state pays us doesn't cover what, what is being paid by. Fair educators, student supervision. Nursing, again, big number for nurses, teachers. That includes salary benefits and enrichment and professional development days. So in addition to a base contract for a teacher, they, they are allowed. Um, additional days, those additional days are not paid by the state. Extracurricular, there's that eight hundred and eight thousand, that's not paid by the state at all. Security, um. Would be interested, maybe the. The state pays us. Point four four seven of an FTE. For safety and security, about half of an FTE. So that two hundred and forty-nine thousand is above. Um, what the state is paying us. School board, I think school board's over budget too. Now, again. What I budget for the school board is WASDA, right? Some travel, um, some supplies, so it's, it's minimal, but.
And do audits out of there too, correct?
Yeah, audits. Yeah, I think audits are out of the, the board's budget. Minutes and grounds, which includes the supervisor. Custodial, you know, four hundred thousand for custodians. Technology. I know Sean loves to hear me say this, the state pays us for one point three. FTEs for technology. And, you know, not a lot of supplies, so we're two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars over in technology. There's the utility number, we also have some other programs, um. We have, you know, like, building budgets, leadership stipends. Association of Washington's, uh, school principals, Missoula Children's Theater. Camp Wooton is in our budget, um, right now. There's some summer school, other, other kind of things that, um, are in that other category. Two hundred and seventy-seven thousand. Insurance is, is a number you've seen before, that was on the other page, coffee machine, water pool. So, five point eight million from basic education. The, the budget again for twenty-one, twenty-two. Um, did have a shortfall in special ed and food service. Six hundred and sixty-five thousand for special ed and three hundred and four thousand for food service. Those are the things we're gonna have to look at. Special ed's kind of a different volume, though, it's. And there's a lot of rules and regulations around special education. Food service, said just before, last year, our food service, actually, I think was in the black, because. We could count, um, as many breakfasts as we did lunches. Because we delivered them on the buses for most of the year, and. So now the course of breakfast are. A lot lower than, than the lunches. So, I just wanna make sure that this is budget, and like I say, I will. Update this for my estimate through. You know, February is half of the year, and it's, it's an easy time to, to come up with, um. An estimate, you know, for the rest half of the year. So maybe keep that up there, Sean, maybe we don't wanna look at it, but, but the conversation is. You know, if we're trying to come up, if the levy fails again, we're, you know, three million dollars. Short. Budget shortfall, another one point six. I do wanna say, there is some good news, like, the state has, I just passed the budget. Last week, and there are some additional enhancements. The next year, nurses, some counseling, um. And there's some other things that we can talk about, uh, even at a time, but. For our enrollment continues to drop. And I'm just projecting enrollment now for next year. But our pattern is, is you, is you'll see in our. Enrollment. Actual that I'll give you, uh, next Wednesday. More, our pattern is, is to be dropping enrollment, so. It's, you know, it's. To be honest, it's a perfect storm, the levy didn't pass, the enrollment's dropping, um. So we do have some definite financial issues to. To face, um, I would think that, that we do need to have a plan. In case the levy does fail again. It's the vote. Is April twenty-sixth. And. Reduction notices, um, for classified or later, but I think that we wanna. Teachers are May fifteenth. So it's not a real rosy picture from your. Finance guy, but.
So each one of those numbers, we've worked on. Um, averaging, uh, or doing an approximation of how many staff members that entails. So if we, we were gonna cut to address this, how many people in each category? Um, would be cut, so there are, genie, as you had mentioned, there are ways that we can. Keep some programs, uh, pay-to-play is one of those. Uh, that, so, I, I mean, one of the easy things to do, say, well, athletics goes, well. We don't necessarily have to cut athletics, we could, you know. Pay, pay that through, uh, ASB funds or pay to play. And so, there is some reorganization that we could do to mitigate costs, um, or to keep programs alive. Um, as Craig had mentioned. It's a calendar year, but school years fall in different years, and so. Um, it'd be somewhat like turning off a faucet, the, the money would slowly start to trickle out. Um, but I, I do think that we wanna be. More aggressive with it, um. And address it upfront than, um, not do that and be in a, a budgetary pickle.
The, the two point two million that we are gonna receive regardless, um, that would come in the fall. And then starting in January of twenty-three, if the levy failed, we. We wouldn't, uh, receive any money in calendar year twenty-three.
No, Kailo and Benton, when they went through theirs, they had a double, maybe, maybe even it was a triple levy failure. Um, they had conversations within their system, their. Their athletic coaches and a lot of their people doing extracurriculars said, we'll step up and we'll volunteer. Until, we'll volunteer for a year until, um, it gets passed, if it doesn't pass after a year, then. Um, you're probably gonna need to address, you know, address the cuts, and so. Uh, those are some of the conversations that we can have later on, this was meant to be, um. Really detailed, providing more with details and, uh, budget allocations and kind of what that looks like in, in both situations.
I have a question about food services.
Okay.
Was it last year that, that was covered with the federal government program, so we didn't have to, the district didn't have to pay for it?
We.
And then this year too?
It just that we, um. Everybody, of course, got free meals. But the biggest thing is that we could, we could count breakfasts. Along with lunches, I mean, so we delivered like five meals to a family, and they were breakfast and lunch.
I think what you're.
No, I don't know, we, we say you can count breakfast.
All the, everyone can have meals free, but we still get reimbursed in the same way we normally did, we still, the cost was this, you know, the costs weren't different. So the district gets reimbursed based on how many meals they serve, and if you serve breakfast and lunch, you get more reimbursed than then only lunch. And so last year, it did pretty well. Even made a little bit of money, but that's, this year, even though it's still free, kids can still, they, they are necessarily taking advantage of it.
The, 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 the amount of meals served is way less.
So do we get, when it's, when they were free meals, the kids didn't have to pay, but then the, the district had to pay for those or was that reimbursed?
Well, we have, we have to buy the. The produce to make the meals. So. I, I don't have the reimbursement rates in front of me, but say that, you know, dinner or lunches, four bucks, we didn't reimburse four. And, and say breakfast is three. And. We get, that, those would be our reimbursements, and that has exceeded our costs last year.
And then have we ever tried to qualify for one hundred percent? Reintroduce lunch so that, and if we did, would we be paying for that money out of the district or is that federally funded?
Well, ninety-nine percent of food service is federally funded. State gives a little. Percent or something like that, it's not very much. Um, there, again, I haven't looked at the law, they did pass a law about the community eligibility provision. That if you're under a certain threshold of, uh, reintroduced lunch, poverty basically. Then they're gonna expect you or require you to, to do that, we have talked about, um. Applying for the, for that provision, um. It's just a matter of, again, getting the applications and processing those.
Does it change how we get reimbursed, though?
It's a lot of it less, actually, our reimbursement's less if it's on that, but. The thought is that you're not gonna have to spend so much staff time. You know, looking at the applications and, and I can't remember.
The last couple of years, we've fallen short by just a couple.
There's a, that provision is, I think, for four years, and then you have to reapply, those kind of things, they look at the numbers.
That one was still in the middle school, we talked about that, but. Food services and that they have almost a hundred percent of that.
Yeah, so, so we're at the stage where we should, we should. Tell the state and services that we're gonna apply for CDP. And they'll, you know, they'll do analysis and, and, and see how much it would cost if it does cost. Cause like, and the reimbursement is less, um. But certainly you'd hope that there would be more meals. Um, served and, you know, a campaign to. To get more meals and so I think we're. Think we're at that point. I think at least, you know, Mr. Hutton was a very strong advocate of that and, uh. And COVID's kind of put a little fold on that, but. So I haven't heard that they're gonna provide, you know, free meals next year at all from the USDA, but.
Oh, when the, the year I was superintendent, there was, we did a little cost analysis of that. Um, and we went a whole lot different free and reduced lunch percentage wise and it.
It was pretty dramatic, don't, towards the cost.
It wasn't, yeah, it was bigger than this cost by a lot. So, and that maybe has changed because things have changed, but. If they could tell us what that would mean for us, that would be good to explore.
One, another, I mean, just one area.
Have a couple of questions and I'm gonna probably, um. Add to yours, who says, you, you talked about count, being able to count meals, um, last year when we were delivering specifically. How do we track meals in each individual school? I guess I'm, I'm curious is. To how, um, you know, if these kids are going to school in the morning, you know, they eat breakfast because it's free, I mean. Like, how is it tracked and what, how far are we down compared to last year?
I mean, I can provide that with you. We have, um, meal accountants that count the students as they. Get a meal. Um, lunch and breakfast. And that, and then it has to, first of all, qualify as a reimbursable meal, has to have so many ounces of. Vegetables and in order to qualify as a meal.
So is breakfast, does all breakfast qualify? Cause I know some schools have hot, some don't have the capabilities. So I mean, like breakfast cereal, does that sound reimbursable?
Do I have what for, do they have to milk and for their components?
It's just like, you know, quote, we did, you know, I mean, our, our. Actual breakfast is pretty minimal to our lunch. So, you know, a lot of people before they go to school or whatever, even if it's free, I think, like, you know, this kind of school meat, right? So that's our challenge, let's make it.
Year, we were delivering it to them, even literally whether they wanted it or not, the box was delivered that had five meals per kid.
Last year we had a monitor on the bus. Stop by.
Didn't have to come pick it up, they order it.
Come out, pick up the meal.
But you get five and five, so.
Breakfast and five lunches.
John wants to get ten meals so that, you know, the counselor is.
Um, my next question. Um, when we were shut down in twenty twenty, uh, what were our dollar savings? What did we save as a district during that timeframe as far as, you know, like utilities?
I'm shaking my head, cause I, I. I'd have to research that. I don't have it on the top.
I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
I'm used to it, Jason.
I know.
Some of them generalities, um, there was some utilities, substitute costs. Um, materials and supplies, so like copying paper, things like that. Um, we could dive, dive deeper into it.
Substitutes were substantial, right?
So a follow-up question, if, if, I, I, I'll let you work on it, but this would be a follow-up question to that. Is if there was a cost savings on a lot of those things, like substitutes, where did the money go?
The money's in our, money's in our bank account.
Does it go into the general fund?
Yep.
Uh, beginning balance?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, yep. So it's just like a savings account, you know, you have a family budget, um, you didn't spend. What you planned on and it just increases your, your savings account.
So could.
So last year, like, you know, our budget was to be short, I can't remember the number off the top of my head, but. We actually had surplus, which is a pretty substantial number.
It was like one point two million, I think. Is that kind of where all that started to?
Yep.
Okay.
And again, the other, the other point that, um, I know some people have asked about is what are we spending our ESER dollars on, which is the federal. Money, um. There were three rounds of ESER. Uh, and we have budgeted, actually, we spent all of ESER one money. We spent, we're spending ESER two money this year. And budget to spend ESER three money next year. Um, ESER three's like, you know, five million dollars. Um, some of that. It's gonna be earmarked for Witstrand, you know, what, what we can carve out of that. But, uh, personal protective equipment, there's some staffing that we, that we're, our. Our argument, our, our conversation is that we're, that ESER or COVID is causing us extra costs. And that's the purpose of. So, um, that again was, was, was a cost savings and maybe we need, you know. Tables and chairs and stuff that, that we probably maybe not would have bought. Um, but because of the close distances and stuff, and so ESER was able to pay for some of that. But I, I mean, I actually keep track of. So I have a big spreadsheet that's by program. And budget and then I compare it to the actual and see. See where the, you know, more revenue last year, less expenses.
Uh, talking about ESER funds now, it might be going down a rabbit hole, but, um. When we look at what we're gonna, what we, what we're spending this year in round two and then round three for next year. Um, not having a round four for the year after that, say, uh, just hypothetical. And I would assume it's not gonna return, but you never know, but, um, can you? Give me some detail, give us some detail on what that actually does for our overall budget? It would probably, it should shrink at five million, right?
Uh, next, well.
In twenty four, twenty five?
Correct, correct, right. That's why this budget is, is bigger, twenty one, twenty two's bigger than twenty twenty one. Cause there's some ESER dollars in there too.
And I, I guess that, you know, I mean, probably it's an overall question for us, right, is. You know, as we get out of these ESER funds, you know, now we, we take a budget that's forty three million dollars and bring it back down to thirty eight.
Right.
With those ESER funds, we still had a one point six million dollar shortfall, right? Am I?
On, on, on paper, yes.
On paper.
On paper, yes, which is my estimate, my projection.
And granted, we had some extra funds come in after, uh.
Correct.
But, uh, budget reconciliation, so I. I would be curious to see if you could, in, in this would be estimation, uh, that far out, but if you could. Give us what are, if we spent the same amount of money. But we don't get the ESER funds.
Because. Being honest, there are some staffing that we're paying out of ESER that we. Couldn't sustain. And that's, that's the issue is. Yes, there's a fix, but it's not a long-term out of risk.
Yeah, those are dangerous ones that a lot of districts made was they. They pushed all, well, there were different things that happened. Some districts pushed it all into hiring new staff. And the problem with that is you have to sustain that over time, we have to let those people go. So that, that was one, you can use it for facilities, uh, we use some of it for like computers, PPE, things like that.
Well, I think that's all justified and it's probably not an expensive, I wear incur, but it'd be interesting to see. Uh, just a rough projection of what that budget will work like without any of those.
And I, and I can certainly give a summary of what we spent on too, right?
Yeah.
Full staff, supplies, computers.
Probably staff would be the biggest portion of it.
Some districts back build, um, a lot of their staffing to ESER. And so, and then they were able to put more money in their general fund. Um, and like bolster, bolster that amount. Um, so we, we were pretty conservative with the staffing piece, knowing that we couldn't sustain that. Um, and then ESER, ESER three, we were really looking at. Um, being able to, they, they said you could use it for HVAC. And so we're gonna use some of that for Witstrand and then hopefully have bond monies left over so we can address our fighter. Um, but now with gas prices going up, labor shortages, supply chain issues, inflation. Um, that really, well, we talked to the architects, that conversation is that, you know. Uh, the price of Witstrand, worst case scenario, they're saying could be double what it was initially, so.
Anything else?
So I think, at least for now.
So I guess the conversation, next piece is, um. I know the three of us have talked about maybe. Having. Having maybe a board member or two join us in looking at possible reductions. Not sure how public we wanna make that per se, right? But. We can make, you know, the three of us can make recommendations to the board.
As far as budget talks or just, just reductions?
Reductions.
The challenge is with some of these things, it's so person-specific. It just, I mean, people, people are already stressed and it's hard.
I can make myself available, but I will step in for anybody else. I mean, I have time because I'm gonna go, I'm just throwing that out there.
I don't know if that's, I mean, I'm just thinking if that's the best way to go about it, but, uh, maybe just talking out. Out loud or thinking out loud.
Maybe certainly. Come back and, and, and to public and everybody to see here's, here's recommended adjustments, um.
With that said, it's not the first time we've had to do it either. You know, a number of years back, we were in a, in a one point something multiple year, you know, kick the can down the road kind of thing too. And we, we had to go sit in and put everything on a whiteboard and. And it just is what it is.
We could have another study session too, the anecdote. What's the famous compression, compression planning where we. Put everything up on the board and try and justify, it was kind of like the zero sum budget, you know, start with zero. And then justify. What's most important? I mean, it's, it's really resource allocation. I mean, there, there's certain things obviously that you have to have just for support. Um. But, you know, what was the number one thing on the survey that? That people wanted. Teacher, teacher and learn, teaching and learning, I mean, that's, that's.
That's our business.
That's what we do.
I was encouraged by that.
Yeah. And so we certainly wanna. You know, reduce things that are. Less close to students. Yeah, it's definitely a big challenge.
What do you think about a self audit of how we mainly get the bit expenses that could be reduced? Just, you know, pick up anywhere you can before we start looking in conjunction with cuts that would have to be made.
Yeah, we can do that. Um. Again, I think, at least my philosophy would be, what can we do without touching people?
Right.
But eighty-five percent of our budget is people. So that's, that's the challenge, right? Again, we're just talking basic care, we're not talking any of the programs, anything like that, so. Yeah.
Would you guys like to get back together and do this again more in-depth next time?
I thought this was really helpful.
Yeah, because it'll, it'll get way deeper than this.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Rabbit, rabbit holes up at once.
For its pleasure, but we're just kind of thinking if, if you wanted to have one or two of you come. To look at, you know.
Maybe start there.
More of the minutia, you know, how many staffing are in this or how, you know, what's, what's involved, like, like this other, I mean, how much money we've been talking about for Camp Wooton or. You know, Missoula, Chul, Chul, I mean, those are kind of things that.
In fact, way back when, one of the things when the out-of-state travel was brought up recently, that's when it went away. We decided that anything, if you couldn't jump in the hippie van and drive to it, that. I mean, it, those are just some of the things you had to decide. I mean, there was a day when we had cookies at our board meetings. These good cookies.
They took the cookies away from me.
But yeah, if, you know, if you, a couple of people wanna jump in to start with and we can do this again. Sometime before, you know, the levy runs or.
Yeah, and it's my perspective. I'd like to, it's a lot of extra work, right? Well, we gotta do it, it's work that has to be done. Two different budgets, basically, right? The state probably in two, three weeks will give us the revenue side of the equation, which. Is pretty important. Um. And then the expenditure side. You know, not too much longer after that, so I can start to piece the piece, piece the pieces together.
Well, also, we also should get the implications of the new budget with some areas, they put some additional funding in. That could potentially help offset some of the damage.
So that's, that's kind of revenue piece.
The new nursing council portion is supposed to get a big part.
It's gonna phase in after, you know, four years or something, but we'll, we'll get a little bit more. Next year, so then, I'll just be honest, then the challenge is, okay, do we? Hire more, right? Or do we just kind of use that to? Help back here. And that's, that's, that's a tough. Yeah, state's gonna give us, yeah, three more nurses. But if we're two hundred and ninety thousand dollars over, you know, can we buy one or hire one or something? But those are the hard decisions to make. And I also heard just real quickly, and I'll be quiet, but, um, some of these pieces. The state's gonna ask us to, uh, actually show them that we hired. Like, like a nurse. And again, I can't remember which pieces those are, so. Compliance, you know, here we're giving you an extra FTE. Now, if we can now show where we're over that, I mean, that's all.
So I heard it was less nurses and more assistants.
That's all gonna be, yeah, fleshed out with OSPI and finance people and give us some guidance, but.
So Genie's game is one of you guys' game to see that?
It just depends on the day and the, and the time.
Give them a call, Craig, go to mention.
Now, my stage opens up in May.
It opens in May?
It just depends schedule-wise for me, I'm pretty scheduled up right now, but I'd rather.
And again, we can. Doesn't have to be the same ones all the time either.
Okay. I have another, if the levy failed and people, we still have money till the end of the year. We run in early next winter.
Right.
That would not fund until the beginning of twenty twenty four.
Correct, yeah. So if we ran a levy in February of twenty three, we wouldn't get. Money until spring of twenty four. So really, maybe saying it a different way, half, you know, we'd lose half next year, we'd lose, um. Half the following year, so it's really kind of two years that would impact, it's two school years. We wouldn't start collecting until spring.
And how many, when you're low on the farm?
It was a twenty-year bond, like, seventeen, right?
Yeah, you had said that before and it was.
Did I, was it seventeen? Or was it twenty?
I know it was less than I advised because it only went up. It, it only went up a tiny bit, like on a, a per year tax basis and it knocked like five years off.
Twenty's in my mind, but it might be seventeen, maybe it's seventeen and a half.
A lot. I don't think we can refinance it for another five, right?
Right, right. Yeah.
We didn't get a horrible rate either, it wasn't.
We got a pretty good rate.
It seems like four or five or something.
Remember we did that callable and that's not, so that's three, four years down the road, right?
The thought, the thought process at the time was we end up with one, one hundred percent rebuilding. Three gutted, remodeled, updated buildings. And then we would do whatever we could afford to do at Housen in the thought that fifteen years from now, it would be on its last leg and. Because things, things have been. Things have been let go in, in, in hopes of a bond passing, you know, since like a wait and. They were just rough, so.
Well, I appreciate all the work that you guys did. I think it answers a lot of questions that I had, so.
We'll throw it out to Peggy as well.
I already emailed Tommy.
If you want to make one comment, just in case, I know Jason.
He just, just said that, he said I got one.
I could have said in my email.
I can't.
So you're gonna find out that on the levy detail. Right? The spreadsheet that has the coaches and stuff on it, I included the counseling secretary. Under counseling. And the, the big, this, this one here. Has that position under secretaries, so it's.
You probably would never know, but Craig wants to make sure you know.
For me, I'd look at that secretary number and say, well, that's not the same number.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
It's a one.
That makes sense, Jason?
No, oh, there it is, secretaries and offices. It's a one twenty.
Um, I'm sorry.
It took me a while to find it.
Okay, so secretary, or yeah, secretary.
Line nineteen.
Or where?
Yeah.
So a hundred and twenty-two, right, on that sheet? And the counselors are three eighteen. But on, on this levy graph, I've got counselors at three thirty-five. So it's just, it's just split out on there. Just wanted, let you know that I looked at that.
I appreciate it.
Be honest with it, when we were working this afternoon, he's like, I'm off five dollars, just put a dollar on something. A dollar is okay, but he's an accountant.
Alrighty, guys, so we'll go Peggy in. Janie's already says she's in. If I have time, Jason, if you have time. Get him a call and we'll try to get in there.
As long as you know you'd ask her, Dave, and see if you can.
So Craig takes more than one day.
Right, like next week?
Oh, it'll take.
Which next week?
Several days.
See.
And sometimes two or three hours.
The last thing on our items is the Patterson School District letter or a.
Yes.
Yeah.
So Patterson's a non-high district, which means they don't have a high school or they're elected feeder. So as such, when we built this building, they were um, supposed to pay a portion of it. There's a formula for it. And we've talked about uh, before, we can push them to a capital levy situation. Where their taxpayers have to vote a capital levy in place and, and pay for us, uh, pay for a portion of this building. There is a formula for that. I, we've discussed it with Monica, their superintendent multiple times, um, and she felt like capital levy wouldn't pass. And so we're working with them on kind of negotiating. What the money could or would be as, you know, what process school district would take as payment. In discussions, we've talked about somewhere in the ballpark between five hundred to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, their initial proposal was uh, two hundred and thirty-four um, out of PIL, which is payment in lieu of taxes. Um, which would be, we would have to spend that money upfront in order to access it. And speaking with her, um, she had said, uh, if you can get me a number so that we can work with Patterson's school board. We will work to try and make that number work. And there, there's been some correspondence between, you know, of course, we've talked about somewhere in the, the ballpark of five to seven fifty. Um, and then when this came back at two thirty-four, um, you know, the uh. I was kind of shocked and so um, this discussion is about, uh, basically is there a number that um, we would like Patterson to work towards? Um, in order to qualify um, for a payment for this building. Um, in the past, we had a joint board meeting between Patterson and Crosser, uh, which was kind of cool. Um, they called their meeting to order, we called our meeting to order, it was BISO. And so our board members got to interact with one another. Um, so they, they had said that they were interested in helping with uh, Art Fifer, um, that project. And so. Comments, is there a number? Um, what would you like to see happen?
My question is, we figure five hundred to seven hundred and fifty and maybe that.
Yeah, that was a discussion um, earlier, earlier this, earlier this year.
Refresh my memory about using the state's uh, figures. What was the original number? I've got the memory span on that. It was, I believe it was in the millions, right, Craig?
I'm trying to see if I can find that. When we had our joint meeting, there were three different um. Ways of calculating that. One was like assessed violation and that was millions. The other one was like a levy bond rate. And then the third one was an enrollment projection. You know, how many of their students are in our high school compared to like a five-year running out? And that was what we had talked about, that I, I mean, it was a million dollars, I believe, if I can find it.
And then I would think five hundred to seven hundred and fifty is that, is asking too much. Look, it was actually supposed to be higher than that. That's just my thought.
How is the formula determined?
See, I can find this. Yeah, I'd have to find that. We can send you the formula.
How long have they kept this off? It seems like four or five years?
Uh, the initial conversation went back um, to Ray and Peggy. And so it was when Crosser was looking at running a bond, Ray went up there and met with Peggy. Um, Peggy transitioned out and um, John Seaton was there. Ray and Craig had gone up and met with John. Um, when D N N, when D N O was the interim, D N N Craig, that conversation was kind of put off. When I came um, on board. Peggy and I went up there, we met with them. Um, there was, there was some hurt. I guess some hurt feelings about um, ways that things have been dealt with in the past. And the feeling that process school district had strong-armed Patterson in a number of different ways. But I've worked for, you know, this is year four for me and so um, the four years I've been here, it's been. A conversation through the bill, through everything else. Ideally, we would have had it before the bill. But uh, kind of got kicked down the road. Um, one of the reasons being due to COVID. And the, kind of the gravity of those conversations and the heaviness of those and trying to, to scramble, but we were able to have a joint board meeting. Uh, with their board members. And so it's been, it's been ongoing involving multiple superintendents, multiple board members, multiple years.
I was often less than that, so the lowest amount we discussed. That's just kind of like.
And Peggy was superintendent at Patterson? She can't be part of this conversation then. That would be a conflict of interest.
Yeah, there were, there was discussion, um, I think at one point about um, her recusing herself.
Yes.
So what's our, what's our next option?
So they, they were looking for a dollar amount. And so Monica, Monica wanted to know if there's a dollar figure that Crosser's looking for, so. Basically, we don't, we cut through the back and forth of the negotiation and they don't come up with a number and then. We bring it, Crosser says, we actually want more than that, so.
So, I mean, let's kind of, let's kind of talk this out loud. I think that's what a work session is for. So we have a formula. Really, this should have been done when the levy, when the bond ran here. This should have been taken care of and done with the congregation. I mean, that seems like that would have been the best practice. I'm not really going into litigation or, and we can't use our attorney because our attorney is Patterson's attorney. So now we're spending. Big money on education attorneys out of Seattle. To push them to run a bond. So then what if the bond fails? So then, so then what?
Yeah, um, so it, it would be, so a bond is where, you know, of course you sell municipal bonds, like putting something on a credit card. This would be a capital levy that it would be a tax measure that their taxpayers would pay in the course of like a year. Um, if it doesn't pass and they get, you know, of course you get two shots of the levy. Then that would bring up the discussion about consolidation. Um, whether we wanted to consolidate uh, Patterson's school district as part of Crosser.
And that would be more litigation.
Yeah, so based upon, yeah, based upon um, the way that it's written, we could push, push to that.
That's expensive.
Yeah, yeah, that, I, um.
In my head, in my head, we spent quarter of a million dollars fishing for this, to that point.
Yeah, there, uh. The inter-local agreement um, had specified that the E S D superintendent um, would kind of be a mediator. Um, and try and, try and work together to get to a number. But of course, that would happen if we had offered too high and they weren't able to make it up. Uh, my discussion has always been, we don't want to, you know, we don't want to capsize their vote. We want it to be reasonable. Their, their board made the decision um, to have the district incur that cost instead of their local taxpayers. So, so we're negotiating basically about what's in their um, fund balance. How much, you know, can we set up a payment plan where they pay us over a period of time? And we put that away um. In an account and, you know, let it, uh, let it mature and then of course, address, address maybe the football stadium later.
Yeah, it doesn't make sense to me to spend, or to, you know, the potential spending that could occur. If we can get a mediator or bring this up on our own without spending, I mean. Those guys are going to charge a hu- a huge amount of money. Um, they're on, you know. They're probably seven hundred to a thousand dollar an hour attorneys in downtown Seattle. And then, you know, there's no relationship, no prior, you know, relationship with them. I just think to me, let's, you know, let's try to do it the easy way first and see if we can get somewhere. And I think, you know. You gotta remember they're gonna vote on this levy too. I don't think it's, you know, smart to poke the bear. And do that. I also think, you know, those families pay huge amounts of property tax to this school district. Oh, yeah. And we want, we want them with us, not against us. What do you guys?
I did, I did, I did find the spreadsheet and it's, um, I can send this to you. It's Patterson's, it's a five-year average of Patterson's ninth graders, tenth graders, eleventh graders and twelfth graders. And then summed for five years, comparing that to Crosser's nine through twelve. And so Patterson's share of that for five years is two percent, two point three percent. And then multiply that times the um, local share. Again, this was, this was presented uh, back in October of twenty-one to Patterson. Take that two point three three percent times, I believe it's the local share. Of, of the high school, which was at that time forty-five million dollars. And so that, that formula was a million and forty-five, million and forty-eight thousand.
I have two questions. One, at one time, did they buy into the five hundred, seven hundred and fifty?
Uh, yeah, they were, uh, they thought that that was an appropriate amount.
Okay, that was my idea. Tell them we'll settle for a half million. And then if they don't come up with that, because you always offer less than you can give. That's my thought. I don't know if they'll spell the same way.
At the same time, though, don't wish for a loaf of bread when you can wish for the whole store.
Yeah, it's kind of that way too.
Double-edged sword. But yeah, that's, that's fifty percent of the theoretical IOU.
Yeah, I told Matt when he sent that out the other day, I said two hundred and thirty-four is not enough. They, they should be putting in more.
Yeah, I would actually think something like maybe uh, two hundred on a three-year payment, three payments of two hundred. That way it doesn't hit into that all in one year.
I would if they say, pound sand, try to consolidate us, we're gonna join a different school district for high school. Is that an option available?
Yeah, they, yeah, they would still have to pay the Kennelwicks project.
Yes, I had friends at Kennelwicks High School.
Oh, they're, yeah, I mean, I, they don't have to only date us, they can.
Sure.
But they like it here.
I, I mean, I think that Matt and previous superintendents have just tried, tried to do the whole, the neighborly thing and all together. I don't think that we have, it's our goal or intention of, you know, jumping out of planes and swooping in and taking over or anything like that. It's. But coming to something reasonable.
I think, I mean, I think for the most part, people want to come together. Those things work out in mediation or beforehand. I don't think people either way want to spend that kind of money trying to.
And if we make a law for it, and they turn it down at that point.
You want to spend a quarter of a million dollars to get five hundred thousand dollars?
That's still what they're offering, that's.
Yeah.
It's kind of a lose-lose.
So I'm kind of okay with the fifty percent number. How, where are you guys at?
Well, I like your idea of the, you know, two hundred thousand a year for three years.
Well, you, you could even do it like a, a BOGO sale, so to speak, where you could say, okay, you know, we do fifty percent of the. The formula, one payment, everybody's happy. If you're not cool with that, we will do something like this where it's. Two hundred or two twenty a year for three years. And again, we get a little more in the long run.
They didn't agree to this formula. This is just.
Oh, I know they didn't agree, but that's, that's, that's a, a used, well-used formula, right? We didn't just make it up out of thin air.
I got this from other districts that has.
They say, we have a different formula.
They said, there's no way in heck that we can pay a million for you that.
Are PIL funds a annual or are they a one-time?
What?
No, you get them, um. I believe it's a.
Lots every year.
So if we are. They try and take it away every, um.
Is that the state?
In fact, I heard something about it, that it might be going away because we get some from uh, North.
So I, I believe, I don't have the letter in front of me, but I, isn't that what Monica was saying?
Yeah, yeah.
But that's starting a bank account. That two hundred and thirty-four thousand.
The balance of our PIL funds.
I just want to say, just for your information, we, again, this is old data that we had eighteen, yeah, the fighter averages eighteen students from Patterson.
So yeah, I think we have to do one with the F, either come up with a half a million or give it two years or two years now.
I said we'd make the offer with them too.
Yeah.
And they could tell us to pound sand on both of them.
Because two hundred and thirty-four is not that often, or, or what they should be getting.
As long as the formula that's being used is a recognized formula, we didn't just make it up out of thin air. Then it seems more than reasonable.
So five hundred for uh, two hundred over the course of, two hundred thousand dollars a year.
I mean, if they could guarantee, which they can't, their PIL money. I mean, if they could guarantee, which they can't, their bill money, you can say, well, we can just accept that three years running, but there's. Always a chance that. Well. I mean, I guess we could do something like that, if it goes away, we will accept the two hundred thousand payment. But otherwise, we want the bill money, because it does have to be spent differently, correct? Which actually would work out well, because if we're only spending it on capital projects anyway. We could dedicate, that works out to a little over three quarters of a million, we could dedicate all of that to the stadium. If it goes away, and if, I mean, if it doesn't, great, that's an extra thirty a year. And it's, for them, it's bill money, it's not budget, like I said, it is budget money maybe, but. If it does go away, then we do a fallback on the agreement that, you know, we take two hundred. For the next two years, make that offer. It's. I mean, there's no, there's no sense in, in shooting them out of the water, I mean. I've never really understood why loom sharks break knees, because other guys can't go to work and pay them back.
I just think we need to do something to get them, because they, they're the ones that have to.
Yeah, we've been working on this for a while, so when they have a number, of course, they'll. They'll work on trying to meet, meet our number. Of course, move forward, I, I think Monica wants it off her desk as well, so.
Anything else, guys?
Have you guys been able to hear us? This is nice.
So I just looked up and noticed the camera was off. Well, guys, if you have no more questions or nothing else interesting to say. Say we adjourn the meeting.